Twenty seventeen. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from our June fourteenth meeting? And I'll accept a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Second? Okay. All in favor of approving the June fourteenth minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Me. I wasn't here last month.
Tracy, did you get? Gary was absent. At this time is the, we set aside time for appearance of interested citizens. This time is made available for those who wish to speak about an issue that is not on the agenda tonight. Does, looking out into the vast crowd tonight, there doesn't appear to be anybody in the crowd willing to come up. And nobody's signed up. So we will move on to the public hearing section. And I will open the hearing for a text amendment section two point three oh nine site and landscape design. Staff.
Well, thank you. Due to the fact that Shane has been out of the country for a couple of weeks, I'll be making the presentation tonight and trying to go through some of the proposed changes. As you see from the brief staff report, there are some subtle but significant changes that we are proposing. And the intent, and at the time that this was written and the packet was sent out to you, we've actually been, we were just sitting down with Shannon, oh, I might add, that Shannon had an unexpected conflict come up. And so he begs your forgiveness for his not, his ability not to be here.
There'll be some contrition.
I agree. Yes. We'll make it worth our time. So, so let's just go ahead and jump right on into it. But as I was saying, that I think that we are actually making some modifications to the language as opposed to what you see in your packet. And I'll explain those as we go through. The intent, as you can see in those three bullet points, was that we want to try and specify that any remodel will trigger compliance with the standards. Currently, our development standards exempt interior remodels. So when you have the Taco Bell that completely gutted their building, but kept their footprint and kept their exterior structure, there was no requirement for them to bring the site up to compliance. Hence the problem with the bike racks. So the other example is when Waremark is coming in. We, as we met with the developers, they are doing simply interior remodel only. And therefore, there is no code requirement that says, you know what? Put some landscape in your parking lot. Put some street trees in your parking lot to help meet our objectives there and those sort of things. So our intent is to try and say, look, guys, if you are, if you are doing remodel, if you are doing anything, then you need to address the landscaping requirements. Now, the problem is that, for example, the parking lot trees, that lives in our street standard section. And that's what exempts the remodeling from having to do street trees. So as we are coming to you, is it street standards or development standards? No, development standards.
Parking lot trees live in specifically off-street parking and loading, but then it's connected to development standard section. So it gets even more complicated.
So we are, we are coming back to you with development standard updates. That's on our work list and it's a high priority for us because of some of these gaps that are in our development code. So there was that, there was that kind of a gap in what we were trying to do. Should we do it here? Or should we, we didn't want to load this up and have different requirements here than what we have in the development standards, particularly since what we have here is hooks to the development standards and the parking standards. So what we would ask you to do then is on page one, under two point three oh nine oh three, just simply exclude, just strike out that second paragraph. I'm talking about expansions for additions onto existing development, including interior remodeling as specified in section two point three point one five. That is the development standards. And right now, the development standards is not fixed. So by linking this to that, we're just simply reinforcing, oh, you've got an exemption. So now, one of the things I did want to discuss with you and make sure that you understand, when we met with Waremark, they told us point blank, and you know, you know the, I personally felt a lot of pressure to make sure that Walmart got here. I mean, sorry. Yeah.
Waremark.
Waremark got here. And so when we sat down with them, they, they said point blank, if you make us do trees in the parking lots, that's a deal killer. Personally, I've, well, I've got my own personal feelings about it. But so it is, what we're talking about is an impact and a, and a significant effect that may happen to some of these projects. Now, that project, that, that Waremark project is a two point three million dollar project. And the kinds of things that we were talking here would have been in the thousands, not millions, you know? So I felt, given the structure of our code and the fact that it exempts interior remodels, I felt very kind of out there to be able to require something of that. Then they, they throw the whole emotional thing in your face. I mean, it's, it's, bottom line is a business decision, and I knew that. But because of the code being at what it was, I didn't feel like I could push that envelope. So the problem is, we're really not fixing that completely tonight. I'm just trying to set up the structure that it will fix it as we go into the development code. So we're trying to clarify on page two, the two point three oh nine oh four. We're trying to clarify exactly what we're talking about, what qualifies as landscape. Okay? That's that first red. Then down in B five, we have cemental requirements that show the following. Our development code counts, for example, river rock counts. It actually counts concrete as landscaped elements. So if it's not covered with parking. So, and we have had some examples where people have just simply dumped river rock and said, that's our landscaping. So I want to be able to stress that you can use those kinds of materials, but you have to use them only as accents. That it has to be part of a comprehensive design. There has to be variety, there has to be a variation. And so what I'm saying is that use of and placement of non-plant elements within the landscaping are used, shall be used as accents. Such elements may only be used minimally and may take up only a minor percentage of the total landscaped area. So that was the intent, that was the intent there. The top part is just wordsmithing stuff. So in section C, we clarify the diameter of breast height, the size of the tree, that sort of thing. At the time of planning, replacement trees shall be planted in accordance with the standards of et cetera, et cetera. Now here, basically what we're saying is we're trying to tighten up the replacement tree provisions. But as Shane pointed out, in reality, it's both giving flexibility that if we have a situation, which we have had, used to be a tree farm, but there are three hundred significant trees that are over fifty feet tall on the site, that would mean that each lot that was, that was platted would have to have like, what did we say? Twenty trees on it or something?
Something like that on that particular case.
And so typically, what we've allowed is for them to pay into an off-site street tree fund. This was set, there's a history behind it, I won't go into it, but we have long allowed them to do that. But we kind of haven't really had a good authorization in the code. So this, this paragraph here would then say, if no suitable off-site, onsite, oh, if no suitable, in other words, they have the ability to give a plan. If no suitable off-site location that relates to their project can be found, then they can pay into a fund. And I've changed that slightly, that the city will determine the cost. It was a little loosey-goosey before, as I mentioned. Now, in, in talking with Gary, there is some concerns about, as you know, we're just doing the sidewalk project up here on Shimawa. And there were some very significant trees that were removed as a result of that sidewalk being installed. Gary's conversation with me earlier yesterday was, why doesn't the same standard apply to the city as it does to private developers? And I said, I don't know. And I did have a conversation with the public works director. He, his immediate response is, well, on that project, where am I supposed to put them? Because on that project, it is just the sidewalk. There are no curbs. There is onsite, on-street parking. And so he didn't, you know, whatever. So we have proposed language, after meeting with Shannon, we have some proposed language about.
This was for the right end of the parks.
Street trees, significant trees. Okay. Okay, I'm getting them confused. Sorry about that. So I'm, in thinking about that issue and what it does not show here, which I would ask for your, your direction on, we could simply add a sentence that would say, these requirements shall be applied to both public and private development. Now that has an impact. It would, it would have an impact on the cost of our public projects. So I want you to, to think about that. Now, probably the biggest outside of the box thing here tonight is on the top of page four. It's E. What I'm proposing is a one percent program for the city of Kaiser. Several jurisdictions in the state of Oregon have a one percent for art program where they specifically geared to public projects only, that one percent of the project shall be applied for the acquisition of public art. What I am proposing to you is a different approach to that. And it would be, as you read here, one percent for public amenities. An appropriation of one percent of the cost of construction or alter, altercation, that would be alteration, of any commercial or industrial building which exceeds a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars in value shall be made for the acquisition and installation of public amenities. Such amenities shall include public site furniture, water features, public art, or other features specifically intended to be used by the general public. Now, what, my thought process here is, City of Kaiser's development code is fairly, in comparison with others, is fairly simple, straightforward. We don't have a lot of exactions. Many jurisdictions, for example, will require the installation of off-site improvements, such as sidewalks, storm drainage, those kinds of things. We typically do not. We do not have much of a vehicle to get the kind of public amenities that we're talking about here. We don't have, I don't have a regulatory vehicle to be able to go to the development and say, you know what? You need to think about your participation in this community. You need to think about how you are improving this community and how we are raising the level of livability in our community. Now, for example, Bonaventure. What I'm, what I'm implying is that there's not a specific list. There's not a, I must have a water feature or I must have a public sculpture. What I'm saying is, there has to be amenities that are geared for use by the public. And for example, Bonaventure, you know, brand new project. In looking at that, they have installed a few amenities for the public. That bench at the very corner and some of the additional landscaping that they did. Now that was governed by a master plan and that's the reason I was able to require it. But I'm just saying, those are the kinds of things that I'm talking about that would be qualified as a public amenity. It would, they would be private improve, they would be public used private improvements. Many large cities, Shannon was just talking about the structure that they have in San Francisco, for example. They have entire public rooftop gardens and public spaces that are required to be available and used by the public, which are maintained by the private entities, and there is full public access. Now, we're not talking about anything near that size here on this, what we're talking about. I do not have, I don't have any good examples to give you of other jurisdictions that have done this. As I, the closest thing that we have, and in fact, I got this language from the state's one percent for art statute. But it's a very minimal amount. A hundred thousand dollar project would be a thousand dollars. Now that really won't even buy you, our benches cost, well, I think they're up to fourteen hundred dollars now. So there's, we're not talking about a lot of exaction here. We're not making the developers pay a lot. It's, but it is one percent. And as you know, when money, when it all comes down to it, everything counts. So I understand that it is, it is an exaction. It's something we have never done. And I, and I, I think we are outside of the box on the typical approach to requiring these things. But now, what I have proposed here is, does not allow for them to pay into a fund. We had this discussion with Jerry, was part of our discussion. Sorry, Gary. It's spelled like Jerry.
They're all the same.
In that, I haven't proposed that there be a fund. But now, in thinking about it and after our conversation, you know, there are some projects that may just be a hundred thousand dollars. And a thousand dollars doesn't get you a heck of a lot. Or there may be some sites where there really isn't an opportunity to have a public kind of area or something accessible for the public. So we could easily add a sentence that would say, well, I've crafted a sentence if you wanted to. That would say, if, if site constraints and the scale of the project make it easier for a developer to pay into the public art fund, they would have that option, allowing them some flexibility. Okay. So that's my spiel on that and I'm sticking to it.
Would the Bonaventures act, they allowed access to the baseball field?
They did. That wasn't Bonaventure, that was the apartments.
But would that be considered?
Sure. Well.
The public would use it.
I would say the way that it's currently constructed, I'm not sure that that would count as really a public amenity. It was more of a public connectivity, which we generally require of developments when there's area attractors already in the code. So, I mean, I, I think, I think it would be a, it would depend. I mean, I, I mean, based on the way it is now, I mean, it literally is just a gated pathway that's there, right? I mean.
Technically speaking, they didn't have to do that. There was access off Shimawa to the church and Little League field required to development.
Correct.
And in the course of development, they basically took that away. So they're just replacing or relocating what they took.
Yeah.
Yeah, so some of these, and, and there would have to be an analysis done as to just specifically what is their requirement. This is above and beyond what their minimum requirements would be.
And I think, and I think the one thing, because when I came back from being gone, Nate said, hey, hold on to your hats. I, I changed some stuff and I was like, oh, that's, that's a pretty cool idea. You know, the one thing, as, as he and I talked about a little bit, and he brought me up to speed, literally, I just got back yesterday, so I'm still a little bit jet lagged and groggy. So I apologize. But the one thing is, you know, throughout, especially in the Northwest, especially in the state of Oregon, you know, place making is a big part of planning, creating a sense of space and a sense of place within our community. And River Road is so lineal and it's so constrained that as places redevelop, you know, for a while, we had urban renewal funds and we had the, you know, the River Road Renaissance project that kind of gave some guidance to get some plazas, to get some public benches, to get some artwork, things like that. And this, I, I think it's a great idea because it gives us the ability to continually get some public amenities. But really, it would be more along the lines of those plazas, those open spaces. You know, when, when we were in New York recently, they have some little tiny pocket parks on the sidewalks out front, or maybe you've got some, you know, furniture that stays there permanently. And I think that's kind of what this would be getting at. I think that, Hersh, the idea of like the connectivity or the pathways, I think we can get to that through more our connectivity standards. And there is a provision in our code that requires area attractors provide connectivity. If you have to go out of your way, but I think it's a quarter of a mile, you have to provide the connection. So I think technically with the apartments, it was close enough that they wouldn't have had to provide the connection. But they, I think, wanted to for their residents there and all of that. And with the master plan, we could have probably forced our hand on that one as well. So anyway.
So since you're considering a fund, would it be okay to then have a, have no bottom limit? And that way, if someone's doing, you know, ten thousand dollars and that goes into a fund, so you're, you're, you know, but pennies, you know, you're getting the funds to do things other places.
Yes, absolutely, it's possible. And I, I make, I am, I make no claims to that threshold is well-established. As I'm saying, this is, we are, we are out on our own here as far as this goes. I, in, now that you talk about it, I would, the only, the only thing that I would say is, but then, the only thing I was going to say is, smaller projects tend to be tighter budgets. You know, larger, it's easier to hide one percent in a million dollar project than it would be in a, you know, in a ten thousand dollar project. However, a ten thousand dollar project is only, what, a hundred dollars? So, yeah, that would be, the threshold is completely a policy decision at this point. I would just, and I, I don't envision that this is going to be what it is for the rest of my life kind of thing, you know? We're going to see how it goes. We're going to make sure that, that it's easy to apply and we have the vehicle. Then we'll evaluate exactly what's going on with it. So, but if you wanted to make it applicable to everything, period, I mean, that's certainly a policy decision.
And my other thought was, and then this, this might be pushing it into another universe, but, you know, in some cases, you know, there's, I guess I consider a public amenity could be a, you know, a transportation, a bus transit stop. And that might be beyond what everyone else would consider. But, you know, there's a lot of transit stops that are, could be nicer or a little more accommodating to people using it. Would that be something that?
I would think that's completely within the scope of what I was envisioning. That it's not required, we don't have any requirements for a transit shelter. We leave that completely up to, you know, the transit working with the property owner. But if they wanted to volunteer that and there was an opportunity for it, I mean, it can't, it has to make sense. You know, they can't put in their own stop.
Sure. Yeah, they'd have to work with the transit. They didn't save it.
Their funds to upgrading maybe.
Right. Sure.
Well, you know, thinking of, technically, the, the new development on Shimawa and River Road, you know, Jersey Mike's, they're, the, the bus stop, the actual amenity is up against the building. And it's actually maintained by the owner. And transit is just watching to see if that works out.
Yeah. Okay. But, yeah, that, I, in my mind, that would count.
You're kind of pushing the envelope, as you said. One of the things that Kaiser has been somewhat prideful of is the fact that our overall building costs for developers is less than others. So from that standpoint, I don't want to push us over by any means. And this seems, with a hundred thousand threshold, that's not going to affect a smaller business doing a remodel of their inside.
The last time we did a comparison of City of Kaiser's SDCs, their total SDC picture, it was significant by fifty percent less than our neighboring jurisdictions. I don't know about Turner, but certainly say it.
Yeah, well.
So we, we do look at it and we are significantly less in our SDCs, system development charges. So I think Kyle can verify that. So, yeah, this doesn't even get near into that territory.
After attending the Dan Burton presentation, what was it, month, two months ago?
It might be two months.
And his emphasis that cities and trees are wonderful. And, I mean, the psychological, the economic, that tree placement does, and he gave solid examples of how economic development can occur because of trees being in the right place. And trees slowing traffic because of the verticalness of trees. And I just was thinking about, you know, D Street. People in that section drive slower than farther away because of the vertical. So I'm definitely not anti-tree. And this does give, in my opinion, at least a token step. And I don't mean that in a negative sense, just one step to see where, where it can go from here.
Well, Kaiser is growing up. We're not just a little back country, little burg. We are a significant city. And I, this honestly is, I think we need to start paying attention to more of creating our sense of place and creating, this is a community, this is something that's not just a strip of little retail along River Road that's a busy thoroughfare. And so this is, I think, a, a way to start in trying to change, to move that dial just slightly. And maybe, maybe if it's well-received and well-implemented, then we can look at, at changing what it is we do. But I think it's a way to start. And I honestly think that we need to start paying attention. We do great things in this community. And you look around and some of the things that have been accomplished, it has been significant volunteer participation, and I hope that continues forever. But it's been limited. And we've done some things with urban renewal, that resource has gone away. So we have to look to how we are going to continue to move that, that perspective into the right direction of creating a community where livability, including public art and public amenities, is part of what we're doing. That, the Public Art Commission meets every month and they work pretty hard to make sure that. we have at least our involvement in that project.
Any more questions, or? Jim?
Jim?
Well, going back 35 years ago or so, it kind of makes Burton a Johnny come lately, but Roger Ulrich did some research, and he started in a hospital, you know, when you're a grad student, if you get money for something, that's what you do. So, he was in a hospital and checked out, his research was on patients coming out of operations for gallbladder surgery. And in this particular hospital, one of the recovery rooms had windows that looked out across, you know, the building was kind of in a U shape, and the other U over there only went so far. So the recovery room, some of the rooms were looking across at the building over there. Others were looking at a row of mature trees. So he found statistical significance in the amount of pain medication, the strength of the pain medication, the complaints and feeling, you know, well-being of the patients. And those that were looking at the trees took less pain medication, and when they took it, it was lower doses, and they were in the recovery room a shorter period of time. And so there's, and what he was doing was, in effect, showing that people like trees. They like Mother Nature. They like vegetation. And so he changed that once he got out of that program. And he took grad students from the college where he was, and he drove them through areas, you know, like real urban areas where there's no trees, like downtown Seattle. And then took them through urban areas where there were trees, like downtown Portland. And then he took them past areas that were manicured, Mother Nature, if you will, public parks. And then out of the urban area to more natural areas, like agricultural areas, and just forests and things like that. And he found that as you went from a really urban area with virtually no Mother Nature, just inert material like pavement and concrete block and steel and glass, to true Mother Nature, the physiological measures like blood pressure, heart rate, galvanic skin response, all mellowed out when people were exposed to Mother Nature. And so, based on that, he was thinking the next level of research would be the endocrine system, where you would be testing people's blood as they went through these different environments. So, uh, I think anything that we can do to enhance Mother Nature, make the area look pleasing, should be done. And, uh, I guess kind of the takeaway from his research, if you want to mellow out as much as you possibly can, the best scene is serene water and trees. If you're looking at, you know, white water river, no, it needs to be serene. If you're looking at water with trees in the background, and the America's Cup sailing boats thrashing through the water, no, serene water and trees. And so we probably aren't gonna have a lot of serene water. We've got Stats Lake, and that's about it. But interestingly, there aren't many trees around Stats Lake, although there are some back away from it. But, uh, anyway, that's the kind of research that is statistically significant and can be used, I suppose, as background to support anything that would get more landscaping.
Gary. Excuse me, I appreciate what you're saying, Jim, and I agree with that. At the same time, I think we're, we have two separate things here. We have an issue of landscaping and trees and all that good stuff. We also have a tax. They don't necessarily tie together, because a thousand dollars on a hundred thousand dollar project isn't really gonna provide a lot of aesthetics. $5,000 on a half a million dollar project is gonna have almost minimal impact. And to use your famous word, exaction, is that what it's called? I think that could be taken as sort of a negative towards trying to draw some businesses into the community. And that's not to say that they shouldn't um, participate and contribute to the community. However, unless we know, you know, so you get $5,000 from Bonaventure, just to pick a recent one. What does that $5,000 do? And if there's no room for it there, you know, they've already filled out, then where does it go? And how long does it take until it's spent? And I'll bring this up, and I shared this with Nate and Shane yesterday. Um, we have SDC funds that are decades old, and they may be decades more before they're spent. It's not a whole lot of money. Um, I checked with Mr. Lawyer today, and he said it's probably about $50,000 in old SDCs. The problem is, though, because of state law, those SDCs have to have matching funds. So, and a lot of these are in older neighborhoods. So, people that contributed to these things 20 and 30 years ago may be dust before, or if ever, those SDCs funds are done. So if we're gonna exact a 1% fee, I think there needs to be a commitment to the person paying that, because that impacts their business, too. There needs to be a commitment back from the city that says, okay, we're gonna collect this in July of 2017, and it's not gonna go on your project, but we'll have it somewhere. But they have to have, you know, what, one year? Two years? Three years? How long until that's spent and accounted for? And if not, then return it to them. Don't just rat hole the money and let it sit there and have no value to anybody.
Jim?
Do you know what type of SDC funds this $50,000 amount is? Is it sewer, water, storm drain, streets, parks?
Parks. So like in the Meadows Park, Holiday Park, some of the Bob Newton Family Park, uh, you know, those are where some of those funds came from.
So.
To sit there.
I, I would think that that $50,000, the funds that were contributed 40, 30, 20 years ago have been spent, and the funds that were contributed more recently are the ones that are still there.
These are all at least prior to at least the year 2000.
Yeah, it gets a little more complicated in that the parks SDC, there's the old methodology and the new methodology. What, what Gary's talking about is funds that were collected under the old methodology. I think we have a lot more in the new method, in the new SDCs. And that's specifically the, the issue because of the way the, the state law has been changed about how you can apply that. What we're talking about here would not be, I, we are not using the SDC authority to create this.
This isn't an SDC, it's.
Not an SDC, it's simply a.
So that whole thing about collecting money and having it sit for 10, 20, 30 years would not appear to apply to this money, because it probably would be spent on the project, and only occasionally would money be collected that couldn't or wouldn't be spent on the project. And if, I mean, this isn't a whole lot of guidance, but I would assume that if somebody paid and they couldn't, or if somebody said, I want to spend, whatever, a thousand bucks out of my hundred thousand dollar project on my property, but there isn't any room to do any of these things, not enough room for a bench? Okay, well then, would the city be flexible enough to allow them to put a bench on the abutting property or somewhere else, maybe in a park?
Or City Hall.
This doesn't seem to preclude the amenity being installed off the site of the project.
So the concept is simply a requirement that development in the community has to have, as part of that development picture, some public amenity. Now, whether that's offsite or onsite, we, I did not limit it, I did not try to create a whole big structure. I, I just tried to say, look, if, if you are developing, or remodeling, or growing in the city, then you have to have a minimal participation in public amenities. And that can be either offsite, onsite, or in, or if you chose into a fund. The only, and I understand the sentiment, as we talked, we had a very helpful and a good discussion yesterday. The only thing that I, I think about, that if it goes into a project, like a public art project, some of those things can take years before they actually are executed. And I'm, those stumps, and right over there is what I'm talking about. I mean, they're working diligently on it. The, you know, the grants are in, in motion, we, we are working on it. But it, it doesn't happen in 365 days. So that's my, that's my only.
And I, I think the other thing, technically, right now, the language that's before you, that you're looking at, does not give the flexibility to pay into a fund, or to put it offsite anywhere. It's literally saying, when you come to a project in the City of Kaiser, that as a part of your landscaping plan that you're gonna submit, because remember, we're all wrapped up in the landscaping section of the code. So when we're reviewing building permits, and we're looking and reviewing that landscaping plan, they're gonna have to delineate and designate, here's our 1% public amenity contribution of how we're meeting this, by providing the public benches, by providing whatever it may be. Um, so it would be, right now, the language before you would just flat out require it to be onsite. So, if you're wanting to go with some of those other options, which Nate has indicated, you know, those are options, just know that if you get to that point of making a motion on it, that's something that we will need to get some direction from, for the record, to know how to modify that language.
I've, I've got a question. So if, on this landscaping, would it be, would that money, could it just be spent on landscaping, if that improved the property? Or would it have to be public use?
Well, they already have a landscaping requirement.
Right.
They have to landscaping, and that's what we're, tonight, we're trying to more clarify, more tightly define what landscaping is. So what this would be is something beyond what you're already required to do.
What if you do more landscaping than is required? Could that be put into that?
Say they planted cherry trees, or apple trees that the public can access.
And maintain, and.
Yeah, gotta prune those things in the spring.
Talking organic, or are we?
I was just thinking, you know, my, my project, I redid the landscaping there, and I didn't have to when I, one, as part of my small remodel that I'm doing. But it's, um, but I put a lot of money into, into that landscaping that wasn't.
Project, who are you talking to?
My, my office.
Oh.
That I'm redoing, so.
Okay.
I, I was just wondering if that would, if that would fit, because it was something that was way beyond what really had to be done, but I was actually just cleaning up the property. Could it be considered?
Where I'm pausing on that one is just visual enjoyment, I, 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 I have a little bit of, that gets pretty hard to quantify, is that being used by the public? You know, I, my gut reaction is, I'd say, no.
And that's what I thought, I just thought I'd ask.
Jim, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, to Shane's comment that this requires to be. To Shane's comment that it requires be on the site, it doesn't require it to be on the site, it doesn't prohibit it from being offsite. So if staff's proposal is that this red language be onsite, I would recommend that the two words onsite be added at the end of the sentence that says, well, I guess it's the first sentence that goes on quite a ways, an appropriation of 1%, and then down, one, two, three, four lines, acquisition and installment of public amenities onsite. That would make it clear, it has to be onsite. But I'm thinking, if there is some small project, and they're gonna have a hundred thousand dollar improvement, a thousand dollars of that would be, or a thousand dollar amount would be a public amenity, then if there's no room, for some reason, to not be able to get it on the site, then it could be off the site somewhere.
This is why I have Shane with me. So the, the, the squeeze here is that these are the submittal requirements on the landscaping plan for the development project. So, uh, if we want to broaden it, we may have to do more structural changes than just adding those two words. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. I know it was a big deal when we, when we allowed offsite tree mitigation. Um, when it originally came about, it was something that made sense for a specific developer that happened to be adjacent to Kaiser Rapids Park in around 2002 or '03, I think, maybe. Um, and it was something that went to a public hearing, and was it '04? Might have been '04. No, not the first one. I wrote it, dude. Um, anyway, so we went to a public hearing, and the hearings officer was pretty uncomfortable with the recommended conditions. However, the developer at the time was actually a fan of the idea, because he didn't want to put, like, nine to 11 trees on every lot. So out of that was born the attorney's office saying, if you guys are gonna do this kind of stuff, you have to change the code. Because at that point, it just talked about significant trees, and they could be replaced at a two to one ratio, et cetera, et cetera. But it was very specific, and I know we had kind of gone round and round with it way back then, to establish the fact that you could actually plant those trees elsewhere within the city. So I mean, that, and that would be, I think, Jim, you're, you're right, as far as Nate's the zoning administrator, so he can make interpretations. There's definitely ambiguity that you could lean on. Historically, I would say, there's not a ton of ambiguity, because it's not a permissive code. Generally, it's a restrictive one. So, I mean, I think that's the, the big direction that we would want to get, is what you guys, as the planning commission, want to see, if this is something that moves forward, if we want to allow them to boot them offsite, I think we need to add some language that says offsite. If we want to keep it onsite, I think, Jimmy, you're absolutely right. We should add, add some language that says onsite, because there is, yeah.
Let's, we'll, we'll work out the legalities. What we need from you is the policy direction as to how broad you want it. Because, I mean, it, we could require offsite exactions as well, and that, that can be part of what we do. So, um, we'll work out that. I think what we need from you is, how narrow do you think is appropriate? Do you want to include a, a much broader flexibility? Do you want to make this just simply a requirement to, in, to create this fund, or the ability to contribute to the public art fund, um, and make it applicable to everything on that 1% basis, excuse me? So those are the kinds of things we are looking to you for direction on. As far as the legal wordsmithing, Shannon's not here tonight, and so I'm kind of.
Gary?
You know, when you mentioned, if, if it is, if it were to go to offsite, then, and this is, we're sort of in, I'm sort of into the wordsmithing thing, too, then Josh shouldn't have to, if he makes a project and it goes offsite, he doesn't have to go down there and maintain it.
That's a good point.
If it's a public art project, does that responsibility fall to the taxpayers for the maintenance?
Well, Bill was very clear that he did not want to be responsible for maintaining these amenities.
Well, from a budget standpoint, a resource, a human resources standpoint, these are all things that need to be worked out. I mean, just like the whole park system, in the chaotic situation they're in.
Kyle?
Yeah, so, so I'm thinking as a property owner on River Road, if I have to do anything onsite for the public, I don't want to have to maintain it. I don't mind paying for something. But if I have to put a bench in front of my property, and I have to maintain that bench, or mean, worry about who's on my property, I don't want that. Even a, um, a fountain or something like that, I gotta maintain that stupid thing for, forever. And, and I wouldn't want to have to do that. So making it on a smaller project, making it available to go offsite, for me, would, would be something that I would definitely want to do.
Offsite or simply pay into the fund?
Pay into the fund. I mean, pay into a fund for it to be an offsite, so. A larger project may not make a different, I mean, it may not make a difference to them because they, they might want it as a visual feature of their property. But on a small property, I wouldn't want to have to do something on my property.
Okay, so you're arguing, you're arguing for allowing.
Allowing something because on a small property, it's just not feasible to do something onsite.
Okay.
Even if I spent a ton of money on the, on a remodel or a change, it would still be, and I have what, a hundred feet of footage on River Road, so it would just be, it'd be difficult to do.
I think Gary's point has given me pause about allowing specific improvements to be offsite. Because again, I, I got quite a lecture from the Public Works Director about. Not, and so the ownership issue, all of that then becomes a little weird if they're offsite on somebody else's property, so. So I would, at this point, I would recommend that we, that we require to either be onsite or pay into the fund in lieu of.
Michael.
Who's paying for the public art or for maintaining or cleaning or any of that public art that we have right now?
Right now, it's the Chamber Foundation that actually raises the funds and pays for that. They do their own fundraising and they pay the stipends every year that go to the artists. They're there on a, on a contract, I think, a, a biannual contract. And every year, the artist gets a few hundred dollars just for the ability to, to do that. And right now, that's being paid by the Chamber Foundation in collaboration with others.
Well, I think that we should have this in, and maybe what Nate, you just suggested is have it onsite or pay into a fund would be a policy direction to give staff guidance as to what to do in terms of the details. One of the items and one of the reasons I think this should be in here is whether it's just simply landscaping or architectural design of buildings or whatever. Companies that are going to invest in a community want to know that when they come in and do a good project, even better than what's required, they're not going to have to put up with somebody on the neighboring property coming in doing a schlock project. And so, for example, Dundee, uh, they have downtown design standards. And companies that go in there have to meet them. And granted, there's an awful lot of old stuff still on ninety-nine W through Dundee that doesn't give the city a very good look. But the new stuff that's gone in has been under those standards and they've had those standards for years. And it hasn't driven anybody away other than the cheapos. There isn't going to be a Dollar General going into downtown Dundee on the strip. And one of the cities that I do the planning for right now has had inquiries from Dollar General. And they're aware that Lafayette has downtown design standards. These are little cities, you know, three thousand people, not thirty-six or seven thousand like Kaiser. They're way ahead of us. And so Lafayette has downtown design standards and one of the questions from the caller, who initially wouldn't identify what company he was representing or anything, said, uh, would we have to, you know, this property that we're looking at at the edge of town in a commercial zone, uh, would we be subject to the downtown design standards? And I said, no, that's for the downtown area, about a seven block area. Okay, we'd be outside that design town, downtown design standard area, right? Yes, for the second time. And so turns out it's Dollar General and so they don't want to go into areas that are going to be quality in materials or appearance or anything else. And so, uh, companies that want to come into a community but want some assurance that they're not going to be surrounded by schlock, they love this kind of stuff. And that's why they're looking for certain areas and they're not looking for other areas. So I think something like this would do well and would attract a lot of companies and would leave out the schlock.
I, I agree with, with Jim on that, and I, I think as Nate was saying, you know, we, we have to move our city toward in a direction of desired look and livability. There's two ways for a city to decide it wants to develop. It can either, you know, be the low ball and get the low ball of everything, or it can build itself up and, and, and companies will want to locate there and will be agreeable to the things we ask of them, so, you know. We can, we can try to be the cheap date for as long as we want to, but eventually it's not going to, uh, to make our town a more livable place, I think.
I'd like to move to the deliberation stage.
Sorry.
But before.
I've got some detailed things.
Okay. And, and actually, there's a couple of things that Shannon rattled off just before he ran out the door.
Oh, okay.
I, I missed off. Shane is the keeper of Shannon's official scribbles. So, um, back to just above, uh, the paragraph that we were talking about.
In the significant trees on the bottom of page three.
Yeah, there you go. Shannon has suggested that we add, um, at the end of such offsite location shall be within, instead of city limits or in a city park, saying shall be within the public right of way or public property or private property if qualifying as a street scrape, streetscape tree. Um, and then at the end of that paragraph, saying such funds shall be used only for replacement trees planting. So, um, the intent is this is the fund, the replacement fund, um, rather than planting twenty trees on a site, that if they want to pay into that fund, then it should be either, so that somebody can't just, well, I'm that has to be located within the public right of way, public property or private property if qualifying as a streetscape tree. And then specifying that they have to be, the funds have to be applied only to replacement, that we can't use them for general landscape maintenance or anything such as that. Um, anything else that, okay, all right, that's, I had to get that off my chest.
Jim, you had some.
Yeah, just a couple of things in terms of administering this and getting to a point where staff or a hearings officer has to make a decision on page two in the general provisions. Uh, in the middle of the page two, there's B five, and then the new language is talking about, well, use and replacement of non-plant elements within the landscaping used as accents. And then such elements may only be used minimally and may make up a minor percentage of the total landscape area. So what I noticed is minimally and minor. And that's two different words, and one means one thing, minor means another thing presumably. And so if it's minimally, okay, well, whatever that is, that might be five percent or something. But if it makes up a minor percentage, that could be forty-nine percent. That's minor, that's less than half. And so just as a, how to use the code, I'm not going to try to wordsmith or suggest things, but at least just to point out to staff that they may want to look at that and say something different or even include a percentage number or instead of minor, say, you know, no less than half or.
Wow.
Give some solid line so that minor doesn't turn out to be fifty-five percent.
Let me give you my explanation. You're not the only one that looked at that line and said, what? So depending on the design, there may be more significant inclusion of non-plant material. There may be some non-irrigated landscapes that use, you know, a, a stream, a dry stream, a stream bed or, and other rock placement. Rather than try and, and specify a specific number and say, you gotta, you gotta be two point eight per, you know, whatever. My intent is give us good design and if you use non, if you use, um, non-plant elements incorporated into a larger and a cohesive design. The intent is, we have people that have just simply put out river rock and, and said, I got it landscaped, and by the book, yes, you do. And so that, the reason I wanted some squishy language there is it depends on the design, really, you know? If I have to, I can put in some numbers and we'll make it work, but that's, that's the reason I did squishy.
If we're talking about landscaping, I wouldn't want forty-nine percent of a landscaped area to be non-plant elements. I mean, landscaping to me means living organic material. Ground covers, lawn even, although that's a lot more expensive to maintain than a ground cover. Shrubs, trees, whatever it might be, climbing plants. And so the use and placement of non-plant elements, and it could be forty-nine percent of the area, that to me would in effect, take away the reason for having landscaping required.
But if I said fifty percent, then somebody who is not very sensitive in landscape design would say, I can do fifty percent of river rock.
Right, well, I'd say knock it down to five or ten percent, and if they want to do some inert material like volcanic rock or something from central Oregon rather than river rock, they're limited to five or ten percent. Bark dust, I, I'm, excuse me, beauty bark, which of course isn't beautiful at all. I've seen too much beauty bark in my whole life. I want to see real living plant material, not non-plant elements.
Michael.
Do landscape architects have a, you know, a, a way of designating levels of things that we could borrow from?
Not, not easily.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I have another couple of things on page four. In the middle again, screening and buffering. And I know these words in the proposed new language, screening and buffering shall be used to mitigate adverse visual impacts. But I would think most buildings that the city would allow in the city are not visually adverse. They're probably just kind of standard construction. And so someone might say, well, my building is pretty good looking and the city's got apparently no problem with it. So I don't need to mitigate it because it's not an adverse visual impact. I would think some of this screening and buffering is just merely to screen the building. Like a big flat wall surface, put some landscaping, some trees there. And that would screen or buffer this pretty nondescript, big, long wall that nobody sees as any having any visual interest or architectural, um, interest. So I would delete adverse and just make mitigate visual impacts of the building itself.
As long as we're there, could we, uh, delete the word pollution?
Uh, yeah, that would be a
I mean, I don't know what a buffer is going to do to eliminate pollution. We already have standards for stormwater runoff and water quality standards, all of those things. A buffer is not going to mitigate pollution.
Unless a creative thinker, and I've heard this before, there is visual eye pollution. The building is so crummy in its architectural design that it pollutes my visual. Anyway, yeah. So I'd be okay with deleting pollution. The other word in that sentence is, in the rest of that sentence, and to provide for compatibility between dissimilar adjoining uses. Is there something in the code that says what dissimilar is? Does it mean commercial versus industrial, commercial versus residential, single family versus multifamily is dissimilar? Or is it dissimilar uses amongst a commercial grouping of uses?
Yeah, so the, the language that got moved to A was in seven. So, and it was only specific to multifamily developments, when a budding lower density residential uses shall be used to mitigate adverse visual impacts. So that language got lifted because that's the whole purpose of all screening and buffering. So literally, I just moved it. Um, that's been in the code for a, a long time. I'm not, I'm not sure. Well, I can tell you that historically, we've used dissimilar to basically say if it's not a commercial to commercial, or it's not industrial to industrial, or it's not multifamily to multifamily, so higher density to lower density, that would be when screening and buffering elements get employed. Historically, we, we require, we have required it when apartment complexes go in and they're adjacent to single family residential neighborhoods. You will always see those that get fenced. Uh, we have one right now that just got its finals off the end of Filbert. They had to put up a side obscuring fence. Or, you know, some that put when, when the ones on the ridge at the end of McGee Court, because it was adjacent to all the single families down the hill, we made them do some big trees on that hillside to create a, a larger visual screen because of topography. We've also required it when it's commercial budding up into residential uses. But Jim, no, there's not anything that specifically addresses what dissimilar means. We have interpreted it to mean over the years when it's not like and like, so.
And I don't, again, intend to wordsmith something else, but if staff is comfortable with this, then we can leave it as is.
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
Number seven, with multi fam, uh, in multifamily development, what's the, what's the minimum number that constitutes multifamily?
Sure, um, I think it's four. Yeah.
Anything more than three?
Yeah. If you give me a sec, I'll look it up really quick. It's either, it's either three and more or it's four and more.
I just wanted to make sure, like, if someone put in some type of duplex or, that, they wouldn't be.
And something that's not related to this directly, but it is related to landscaping. What, uh, if it's a short answer, hopefully, what are the percentages of a site that must be landscaped for, say, multifamily, commercial and industrial?
So it's going to depend on the zone, um, percentages of total area in the different zones and I've worked here a long time and I know most of them, but.
Percent or fifty percent?
Uh, no, most, most commercial is ten percent. Um, residential is going to be thirty percent, single family. Um, medium density and multifamily developments are a lot of times twenty and twenty-five percent. But if that's in a zone like a commercial zone, which it's allowed, then it drops back down to that ten percent landscaping requirement.
Most of our commercial zones are.
Ten percent, yeah.
So something like Sherwin-Williams that has apparently ninety percent inert material on the site, and then there's a little strip out front that is the ten percent and maybe something around the sides or whatever.
Yeah, and I think that's probably a good example of a project that can, they did have a landscape architect when that all got done. A little before my time of reviewing those types of plans, but I could pull the property file. And I'm pretty sure you're going to see that right at, because we make the landscape architects actually quantify. They have to show us the percentages and the calculations. Right, that, oh, yeah, that was included too. So, yeah, I think, and that's the other piece is there may have been some issues there too, since the sidewalk got pulled back onto the site and is actually in an easement through part of it. That sidewalk qualifies as part of their landscaping. So, yeah.
My concern about inert material is when you're looking at different projects up and down River Road, there are some that just, oh, boy, that's nothing but inert material. I gotta keep going. I don't want to look at that anymore.
Are we ready to move on to the next step? Are we ready to move on to the next step? To deliberate, let me, but before I close the hearing portion, I want to make note that there is nobody here from the public to testify tonight. So with that, I'm closing the hearing and we're going into deliberations on what we want to do with this.
Maybe I should have raised my hand before you turned away, but I didn't. So, page seven, item K, replanting.
Page one?
Replanting, page seven, item K. Trees or shrubbery which die off shall be replaced with new plant or of the same or similar type. Replacement is the, and my printer missed that, the responsibility of the property owner. Okay? This is back to my question yesterday. Is the city the property owner? Public right-of-way, trees get put in as part of the development. Then they get, they die, they fall over, they get hit by a car, whatever, they're not replaced.
That's.
As a general rule.
Okay. That's an enforcement issue. It's, it's basically the adjoining property owner is responsible to maintain the public right-of-way.
Trees that would start to capture that.
Yeah.
But historically, it hasn't. And, and then go back to earlier when we were talking about, you had a discussion with Public Works regarding, you know, significant trees on Shamala Road, there's nowhere to put them, well, so they're just exempt?
Mr. Chair, I ask a point of order. Could we reopen the hearing to get this new information into the record?
I think we can. By concurrence?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Reopen. Some more information on this. And again, we'll allow the public to talk, too. To address the new information. Okay. So currently, it is the requirement that adjoining property owners shall maintain the, the tree plantings, the landscaping in the public right-of-way. Everybody has to mow their planter strip. Everybody has to maintain their trees. In the past, we have not enforced the requirement to replace those trees, but the requirement is actually there. And so it would not be captured under the replacement tree, because this is only for those trees that are removed as part of development. But if a property owner, if a tree dies, and the property owner just says, I don't like trees, I'm not going to replace it, then they would be, under the maintenance provision, they would be required to replace it. But they wouldn't be required to do two-for-one, for example, that the development would trigger. So honestly, that's a, that's more of a, an administration issue and something that if, if we feel that through all of this discussion, we think that we're raising the bar on that, then that's something that we will incorporate into our operation.
I just think the standard should be consistent. What we ask Hirsch to do as a private citizen, he should also ask, as a taxpayer, for the city leadership to do.
And use this section, and that's a K under planting and maintenance, doesn't the planting and maintenance apply to private property? Doesn't it apply to public rights of way?
That's correct.
And if there's a concern about replanting applying to private property, and that replanting should also apply to the city and public rights of way, then that would be something that would be in the municipal code, not the development code, and it would be under the municipal code section that deals with rights of way, and it would be a responsibility of the public works department?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, it's hard, you, this is where we really would like to have Shannon here, because he would be able to weigh in a little bit better. But I can tell you this, I, I did code enforcement for the city for a really long time earlier in my career, and we have a street tree ordinance, or a trees in the right-of-way, the maintenance and replacement of trees in the right-of-way ordinance. And essentially, it's, it's an old ordinance, it's been around for, it's early 90s, sometimes I think, I think it was a 94 ordinance. And it has provisions that if you have trees in the right-of-way adjacent to your property, the property owner is responsible to maintain them. You're not supposed to crown them, top them, prune them, or do anything without permission from the city. You're not supposed to remove them without permission from the city. You can remove them with permission from the city. But Gary, to speak to your point, I don't know that there's anything truly on the books that spells out from a policy perspective when or if they would have to be replaced, like you're alluding to, right, that should be there? And I'm, I'm not going to disagree with you at all on that. But I don't know that there's anything on the books that actually cut and dry, black and white spells that out. What there is on the books, however, that we would control would be in our development code, which does obviously govern the private developments. But oftentimes with subdivisions or commercial projects, especially along nowadays, along River Road, along Lock Haven, along Shamala, where we have arterial and collector streets, and we have designated those over the years through the TSP, that the street design is such that right-of-way planting is a part of the street design. In subdivisions, for example, if you're going to do a planter strip, the city, we, the city, our department and Public Works, will actually require that either CCNRs or a homeowners' association, or some other instrument is established at the time of a subdivision that would designate who and how those things get maintained, replaced and replanted. And then there, those would be very enforceable. I think the other, you know, the STIB-funded projects, the capital improvement list-funded projects, they don't really fall under the development code provisions for being triggered by a land use application like a subdivision or a building permit or anything like that. So that's kind of where the loop gets left open. So I think, Jimmy, you're right, I think you would have to either enact a separate ordinance altogether, or maybe be revisiting that tree maintenance and replacement ordinance that currently governs right-of-way trees. But Shannon would probably be the best guy to ask that one, too.
And recently, there was a request to counsel that a significant tree on private property, the joining, the adjoining property, wanted the, the tree, or, no, they, they wanted, they wanted it to be designated as a heritage tree, which is the only protection that we have for private trees. It basically uncovered the fact that there's a lot of funny stuff when you come to property rights and adjoining properties, and council chose not to cross that, into that territory. Now, if we're talking about public right-of-way trees specifically, then that is, I think, subject to these other ordinances. And we would not try to unravel that here tonight. The only thing that I did omit would be the, under, on the last page, page seven, under maintenance, Shannon had indicated that perhaps it would be good to indicate that this requirement, this maintenance requirement applies to existing as well as new development. In other words, if the develop, if they were required trees, then the property owner should maintain those trees. And I would submit that as an addition to what you're talking about. That's all I'm, I, sorry for the omission.
Michael.
So I'm a little confused here. Are we talking within a, in the property, the private property, or is this also including that median that's in the right-of-way?
So recently, we've amended our street tree, our street requirements to allow the fact that if your sidewalk is curb-tight and there is no planting strip, then we want street trees still, so we've basically allowed, we've carved out an allowance that those street trees can actually be on private property. But they're still required trees. And the intent here is that if they are required trees, then both public and private are required to maintain them. So that's, that's, that's where that fine line is.
This isn't probably something that we would deal with tonight with these amendments, but as to damaging public property or street trees in the public right-of-way, as I understand it, when there's car accidents and somebody wipes out a guardrail, particularly on an ODOT highway, they have a whole raft of attorneys at ODOT, and they go through a legal process to get payment for the damaged public property. So I would think if there's a street tree in the public right-of-way in the city of Kaiser, and somebody plows into it and mows it over with their car, then as part of the city's insurance carrier or somebody goes after that insurance company and says, yeah, along with the damage to the car, you got to pay the city for the damage to the city's street tree.
And we do that. And/or restitution if the person has insurance.
So in that case, I would think a property owner who has street trees out front of their property, well, there are not too many of those on River Road, but wherever it might be, they would not be required to replace a tree that's been knocked down by a car accident, because the city, through its insurance, would presumably get money for that, and then Public Works would go out someday and plant a new tree.
The difficulty is when the trees disappear mysteriously.
Yeah. Somebody doesn't want it, or they turn them into lollipop trees like some of the companies do on River Road. I don't know if the city approves lollipop tree pruning or not.
No.
Once it's done, it's an obvious violation that they haven't done it with a permit.
I just have one more question on, back on page three with a significant tree and the two-to-one replacement. The city may require, that's in the center of A, C-A, may require significant tree removed up to, two trees per. If, if there's not the ability to do it on-site and they're paying into a fund, and obviously you'll be coming up with the, the rates of how much that would be, does it matter then? I mean, why can't we just have it at two-to-one? Or why would the city say not two-to-one?
Well, you see, this is existing language, and originally, it was intended to allow them to come up with a general, a, a plan and not, so it's a valid point. We've kind of moved beyond that. You either plant two-to-one, or you pay into the replacement fund. So I would not be opposed to striking the "may."
Okay.
Oh, here he comes. Any other questions or any new information, or? Are we ready for me to close? Not eagerly, okay. Again, there is no public here to testify before we close, so we're closing this portion of the public hearing on this text amendment and going into deliberation. To be honest with you, this, I, I'm, I like the concept, but I'm confused on the implementation. I'm few, I, I, in my own mind, I see some inequities happening and, and some confusion. I, I like the concept, I'm all for us moving ahead with some sort of, and I don't want to use the word token, but minimal step forward to try to get trees and that stuff. But I want it to be fair and equal for both the city and, and any developer, so. And I'm confused on, on the equity part, portion. I'm not sure how if.
In regards to the threshold?
The thresholds and what's the city going to do with the money? Is it going to be done timely? I'm, those little, just normal worries that.
Did you close the public hearing? Are we in deliberation? Sorry?
Yes.
Too much talking going on. So that's, the proposal is that it be into the public art program. Between the operations here of our public gallery and the art program that we have on River Road, with the projects that they have lined up in the near future, I think Gary put it rather eloquently by, if there's money there, there will be a way to, to spend Anyway, the re, starting an established program, and the reason I'm suggesting that would be a place to put it.
It's established.
It's established. And then, that would then become a budget process. So they can't, just because it's there, they still have to go through the budget allocation process, which is.
So the public would have input through the budget hearing process?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. It's, it's not a, it's not a blank check.
Do I have a motion? I guess.
With Jonathan not being here. So I move the planning commission recommend the city council adopt the proposed amendments, and to go through the changes with help from the commissioners and staff. On page one, the last paragraph that starts expansions would be deleted. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great.
One down.
One for one. And then on page two, I guess my con, my notes here are just about things I wanted to ask about. There's no changes on page two. And then on page three, down toward the bottom, there was some language that Shannon recommended be added. And so that would be part of the motion.
Could you go over that language one more time? I didn't take it.
Yeah, so with it, and it sounded like Michael was asking to change some language on the city may require. Is that right? Okay. So.
Which, I'm a little confused, because on my plant, on my.
On his version, it's there.
It's already stricken.
Because he said, I was like, I thought we did that.
But it needs to be stricken.
Yes.
Well, on my, on my proposal, it is to be stricken.
So you're just wanting to know the Shannon's comments?
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be the sentence that starts such off-site locations shall be within the city limits or in a city park? The, yeah, page three.
Just above the new paragraph, at the bottom.
Okay, so there's another one page, just like I couldn't read. Thank you.
Yep. So it was striking out city limits or in a city park and replacing it with public right-of-way on public property, or on private property if qualifying as a streetscape tree.
And then at the end of that sentence.
So after the word appropriate, it would say such funds shall be used only for replacement tree planting.
And then after that, I suggested in, that you may consider the addition of the sentence, these requirements shall be applied to both public and private development in response to Gary's concerns. So I don't know.
Okay, that would be part of my motion.
Yeah.
Shannon's comments and what you just read or stated as an addition of yours.
Okay.
Okay, so how are we doing? Okay?
Got notes. Needle bail you out, Tracy.
And then on page four, we've talked quite a bit about the 1%, and in a way, I, does it have to? And in a way, does it have to be for public amenities or just 1% for amenities?
Well, the intent is that they would be amenities that are used by the public.
Okay. Well, then leave the public word in there in the lead-in heading or sentence. And then there was talk about having it say, and at the end of that first long sentence where it says acquisition and installation of public amenities. We could say onsite, although staff said all of this stuff is about a landscape plan and what needs to be on the landscape plan, which would be on the site. So it might be redundant to say onsite.
Although I...
If your, if staff is okay with onsite?
I'm okay with onsite. After all of our discussion, I'm okay with onsite.
Then add at the end of that sentence onsite. And then there was discussion about, or payment to the Kaiser Art Fund or whatever it's called.
So I have a, a, a sentence that property owners who choose because of site constraints or minimal scope of the project may pay into the city pro, public art fund the amount so specified. Now, we may want to rewrite that to say public owners simply may choose in light of, of what Kyle was talking about. That maybe they don't have to justify it. They can just simply choose. That would be something you would give direction on.
Yeah, I guess in the motion then, I would go for the small projects where the owner could choose to pay into the fund.
Do you want to ju, do you want to just drop off? You want it limited to just small projects that they would choose?
What's a small project?
We'd have to do some kind of clarification.
Yeah, I would think small projects because even if you have a hundred thousand dollar project, it's gonna pay a thousand bucks. I'm sure they can find some way to spend a thousand bucks on their site. I mean, it...
Okay, so let me reread my sentence and see if it fits. Property owners who choose because of site constraints or, or minimal scope of the project may pay into the city public art fund the amount so specified.
Is that Gary's?
Furrowed brow.
If it's onsite, then do we need to remove intended for use by the general public?
I think that's important.
Because if it's your business, it's your property. I, I can't just go hang out at your place, which is one of the things Kyle was talking about.
Yeah, and that was definitely something that I'd really be concerned about.
Because there's lo, there's liability.
Yep.
There's...
Maintenance.
That, honestly, that's, well, and so I'm not sure what you're, what you're saying. The intent is that these would be amenities that are for the benefit and use of the public.
And so if a property owner didn't want the public coming on and sleeping on his bench overnight, they wouldn't put in a bench. They would choose another amenity.
Or they would locate it in such a way out on the street that it would be u, easily used and it wouldn't impact the rest of the site, that sort of thing. But I'm okay if we want to just simply allow it to be a choice of the property owner, whether they locate it onsite or pay into the fund.
My, my thought is, should we put some kind of a threshold? Because on a major project, you know, a whole, a new construction, a million dollar project or something like that, or, or like the 2.3 million dollar project that we're, that's going on. There, it would, to me, it would almost be, they, they should be improving. If, you know, they should be doing something on a larger scale where on a smaller scale, it doesn't make sense because of the dollar figure. But on a larger one, maybe we do put some kind of a threshold on it just so we get some kind of improvement. Where everybody's gonna be paying into the fund and we'll have these, these funds for art projects that are all, you know, centrally, centrally located.
And, and that was the intent of the sentence I crafted was to try to, so if they're, if they're fairly small projects and they have limited site and they have, you know, a, a confined scope of what the project is, that's was my intent to get at, what you're saying.
Hundred thousand.
But a, a major remodel, a 2.3 million dollars, I'd say, it does not pass the smell test.
So I guess with this discussion, well, Michael?
I just was gonna say, are we considering the zero dollar threshold?
We haven't talked about it yet, but...
We have this current motion.
Yeah, a motion in progress. So as we go, then if the motion would include what Nate was talking about and if you need the minimal scope, if it's less than a hundred thousand, then they could...
They could choose.
Choose. And that would be what defines the minimal scope and... And maybe as a caveat to the motion for some of these details, whether it's a hundred thousand or you want to drop it to 50,000, the motion could include giving flexibility to staff to discuss more what a dollar figure would be for a minimal project. Something, if a hundred thousand isn't the right number, then...
I can't leave these things open.
Sorry to be deliberating in a motion, but remember, this includes industrial sites as well. And I'm not sure we, if, it may be that, you know, at the end of Candlewood, we don't really want that much public amenity. And so I...
And also if that transit infrastructure is an op, opportunity there and an industrial site.
Sure, sure. And that would be right. But if, if not, and that's why...
But it could be. So I think we can move ahead here and...
Well, and whatever we recommend can be changed by the council at their public hearing. So if what we recommend, after a week or two more of discussion by staff and so forth.
Yes.
If they're saying, well, yeah, here's what the planning commission recommended, but staff is recommending that this language of their recommendation be changed to X. And we would understand in this particular case.
So where did we end up as far as your motion?
Well, I think my motion... My motion would include what you had read about minimal projects can choose to pay into a fund rather than have to actually provide a physical thing out there.
All right. So my, my sentence is what's...
Yes. Okay, and then I guess we did not have anything else on the rest of four?
Where's the 1%?
Or is there?
Where's the only?
Okay.
Adverse and pollution.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, of course, pollution. So then in 2.309.05A, the lead-in statement would delete the word adverse and pollution. And then page five and six have no changes?
On, on, on back on four.
Oh, four.
This would, would be where the threshold question did, so you're not including a suggestion that it apply to all development regardless of size of project?
Right, that they would pay based on this hundred thousand and val, or they would provide based on a hundred thousand value figure. And then if it's a oops, small, minimal scope project...
No, I, that, no, what this does is only those that exceed a hundred thousand dollars are subject to this exaction. And what Commissioner DeBlossi was talking about is, well, if it's a very small project, then they pay a small amount, but they still pay some. That's, that's what I'm saying. Are you going to address that one?
Okay, yes. That, I think everybody should contribute something. And if it's a small project where it's only a hundred bucks, well, okay. What are you gonna buy for a hundred bucks to put in a site?
So you would...
So they might say, I'll just pay the hundred bucks to the fund. And then that fund, which has been administered by a pretty active group and has done a lot of stuff.
So your motion then would be to strike which exceeds a hundred thousand dollars in value. Therefore, it would apply to every, there is no minimum threshold.
Odds up and down or whatever? I don't...
I kind of like to have the, the threshold.
I, I kind of like it the way it is where if it's a bigger project, hundred thousand or more, they have to do something. But if it's a small project, it's gonna create trouble.
Okay.
Then they can, they can still deuce.
This is our first little step. And let's don't be...
Okay, let's, let's focus on the motion.
Okay.
And then we can have friendly amendments to the motion or whatever.
Correct.
I think the confusion is, are we talking about a minimum threshold of paying anything regardless of onsite or offsite? Or a minimum threshold of a size of a project where it would have to be onsite? Those are two different things.
I kind of would like to keep with the, the motion as written here.
Yeah, so what I'm going with is primarily what's written here about an appropriation of 1% of the cost of construction or alteration of any commercial or industrial building which exceeds 100,000 in value shall be made for the acquisition and installation of public amenities onsite. And then earlier, we were talking about or payment to the fund.
Well, that was, that was your wording.
But that is not what you were saying, I thought. And so the sentence would end with and installation of public amenities. And then there would be language added so that, and if we need a figure, project, something to the effect of your sentence, but with projects less than 100,000 are small in scope or minimal in scope and could als, and also would have the option of paying into the fund. So that's the motion and later we can do amendments to this.
Just want to make sure I understand the motion. You are keeping the hundred thousand dollars, but that's only a threshold to what has to be onsite development versus the, below which would be then paying into the fund.
Right.
As an option.
If you're doing a hundred thousand or more, do what this red language says. You know, put something on the site. But if it's less than a hundred thousand, then that's considered a minimal project, small in scope. And along with doing, the developer has the option of doing something on the site or paying into the fund. Yeah, yeah, if it's, if it's a 1% of a hundred thousand, it's a thousand bucks. And so what can you do? You can't apparently even buy a park bench. Well, then don't buy a park bench. Do something else with the thousand bucks.
Yeah, park chair.
Yeah, get a chair at Goodwill and put it out there.
How much was your remodel?
What?
How much did you spend on your project?
I don't know.
Okay.
It wasn't... I don't remember what it's evaluated at.
So we can have amendments once we get to the end of this.
And we're past page four.
Yeah, and it looks like five and six have nothing. And then seven has another Shannon comment. And what is that?
That's under maintenance.
Yes.
L, this requirement applies to existing as well as new development.
Okay, so this requirement applies to existing as well as new developments is part of the motion.
That's an L, right?
Right. At the end of L. Okay, I'm done with the motion. Thanks for the help, everybody.
Yes.
Can you read that back to us?
We need a second on this one.
I second.
I don't want any further discussion. All in favor of the motion as...
I, I guess just, are there any amend, favorable or what do you call them, friendly amendments or anything?
I still have a problem with the hundred thousand dollars as...
Yeah, that's kind of weird.
Just because I, I can think of, you know, I have plans and a hundred thousand dollars for me, I can see me doing in the near future, but I don't want to have, you know, if I go over a hundred thousand dollars, I don't want to have to put something in the front of my property because I'm, my property's so small, I can't imagine doing anything that I would want there. You know, maybe I will in the future, but I wouldn't want a fountain. I wouldn't want a park bench. I wouldn't want anything in front that the public can use because of the, just the tightness of the space.
And...
It's a larger project, a million dollars.
And you're saying that for that amount of money, you wouldn't be able to buy any public art of any significance?
Right, so a hundred thou, I mean, I can...
A gnome to stick in the ground.
But that's the thing is, that, it's a pretty small threshold as far as I'm concerned on a, on a commercial project. I mean, can you guys think of anything that I'm missing that might be?
I think flexibility is a good idea. I mean, I really, I, I do for...
It does need to be flexible.
The unknown reasons of...
A hundred thousand dollars is a very low number, in my opinion.
Or anything, any major construction, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't do major construction for that.
So...
And I think the user type is a big one. I mean, a lot of businesses want that public interface because it's good for business. If they're a restaurant, they want outdoor seating. They want people to linger. That's, but in a professional office, you might not want that as much. So I think, I mean, I think if you, if you were to amend that motion in order to provide a little bit of flexibility for the end user, as long as you're still getting the amenity, I, I think that's probably doable.
Yeah, I just don't like the onsite at a hundred thousand dollars. It just seems like a low threshold to me.
So if we, yeah, so if we increase the threshold to 200,000 through a friendly amendment, would that seem more reasonable?
It's still kind of low, but I, I would be better off, you know, maybe 250.
Okay, so...
That's what I was thinking.
Process wise, you would propose a friendly amendment. If we're done with deliberation, you would propose a friendly amendment to what you think would be. And then the mover and the second would...
So 250?
I would feel more comfortable with 250.
That's okay with me?
That's okay. 250.
It's okay with the motioner and the seconder. So then that makes the 250 what we would actually be voting on.
What's your thoughts on this?
Well, in trying to look at the variety of the development projects that we see, it ranges from industri, industrial kinds of uses, as we talked about, to pretty small little interior remodels. It's the, it's the trying to create a specific threshold that gives me pause in that. And we might have a property owner that is, as Kyle is saying, is, is, I, I just, it does not fit here. It does not do, I would, I almost would prefer to say, let's go back to the original language and just say, depending on site conditions and the scope of the project, whether or not they pay into the fund or not. And that would allow at least a dialogue to say, you know, what are you doing? This, like Waremark, it's a major deal. You know, that's not, that's not a negotiable item. The scale and the scope of that project is, is very large and you need to put in amenities. I mean, we could do that administratively. I can have that conversation. My, my problem with a specific threshold, a number, is there's such a variety of different kinds of development potential out there. And I would, as an administrator, I'd rather have more flexibility, which...
And I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I'm just worried that the number would be too low. So if, if the number's not there and we have another way to, to word it, I'm fine with that.
So I guess, given what Nate has just said, if there were to be a friendly amendment to not include a dollar figure... if there were to be a friendly amendment to not include a dollar figure and instead go with the language that Nate was mentioning, I would be okay with that as the motioner. I don't know about Michael as the seconder.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the flexibility, I understand that, you know, you could've spent a lot of two, two fifty on yours and your lot is small enough that.
There's just so many variables in, in construction. So it's a small site, but it's vertical.
I'm fine with that as the.
So Kyle, you wanna make a friendly amendment to delete a number fig- a figure, a dollar figure and instead go with the language that Nate was mentioning here about, that would allow flexibility.
Ability, yes.
By the administrator.
That's my, my motion.
Okay, Gary's gonna.
I like not having a threshold, I think that offers flexibility. And it also gives, the business owner can make a decision whether they want it onsite or offsite. Because like Shane said, some owners would like that because it might help draw people to their business. Other people, it could be a detriment. However, I still think there's something needs to be part of this that says how long the money is held and collected and some accountability for when it's put out. So it doesn't take, you know, say it takes five years to collect twenty thousand dollars, that's fine, but after you reach that dollar amount or whatever it is, then you either spend it or you give it back. You don't just hold it in perpetu- yeah, that long word, takes a long time, eternity.
Perpetuity.
Thank you.
Well, we have an amendment and a friendly amendment and there's agreement. There is some concern that, and I think that's, the, the, spending the money is kinda beyond what the planning commission, but it is a concern that we have as citizens that i- if there is money collected, so. With that in mind, I think we can proceed ahead with a vote, correct?
Yeah, unless someone else has more deliberative comments or friendly amendments.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we can add in, how to spend the money.
Well, I, I think that is where counsel comes into play as well as the fact that, that it's going to be included in the budget process makes, you know, people will know the money is there.
It's fairly unrestricted too, it'll get spent.
Especially if they, if, if the art committee hears about it. They'll be waiting, waiting for that to pile up to spend it.
I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. And I won't ask, completely reread it.
Thank you, thank you.
Is, is everybody clear on the motion as we went through it?
Sorry Tracy. Tomorrow's meeting will be easier, maybe. All in favor of the motion as described? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Any abstentions? It passes.
As a follow-up and to address Gary's concern, just a thought that came, so I don't know how reasonable or anything it is. Could we have a, some kind, maybe a report a year from now from staff? Or something to say what has happened next spring in the budget process? I don't know if there'd be any money, I mean, how long would it take to get the fund created and would any money be in it yet? But if we could have a year from now, some update on what's going on and how much money is in there and who knows, maybe it would have already been spent by next July because we'd be in the new fiscal year. But I'm kinda thinking the fund, it's gonna take months or something to finally get the funds set up and a bank account and all that through the finance department. And then it'll take a while for development to occur to pay into it 'cause some of the development will have something on their site and only occasionally presumably would a company pay into the fund.
We can, we can report.
So if we could get some kind of report and then next year if we want to initiate an amendment to the code, we can pass a motion and have staff start an amendment.
I, I, I do think that's a good idea, but I think this is where the, having our council liaison is important because our main concern, it's not so much the concept of having trees, but it, how's the money going to be spent?
Well, this is, this is not tree money, this is, this is amenities.
Yeah. It's a things such as public site furniture, water features, public art or other features.
Sorry I used the word trees, but.
Yeah, it could be garden.
But it is a concern of, of. I think everybody here.
But I think that's part of this committee, that's what the council charges each committee to do is make the recommendation to council. And I think if it's how this committee feels that it's spent within a year or five years or whatever, that's what the council's looking for. So, and yeah, it can go to budget and people can come and ask, but I really believe the committee needs to make the recommendation to council. If the council chooses not to accept that one or change it, that's the council's, but it really is, the council looks to the committees for your recommendation, you guys are the ones vetting it. You know, there's no one here obviously tonight for public testimony, but you guys have had a robust conversation tonight and I think that needs to be addressed, in my opinion, so. Whether you choose to send that on or not, that's up to the committee.
Well, Mr. Chair, even though we've made our motion and everything.
And voted on it.
And voted on it. I assume we could make another motion to add on something that's not in here yet.
I'm in the recommendation.
Or we could.
Total a new motion.
Total a new motion.
It would be a new motion to add something that we accidentally inadvertently left out of the first motion.
I believe that, this is, where's Shannon when you need her? So I believe that you can vote to reconsider. Reconsider. You can vote to reconsider that here in this same meeting, you haven't closed the meeting. So you can vote to reconsider it and then have the, another discussion. Assuming the vote to reconsider passes.
Right, so.
Looking around the room, is that?
Well, since I was on the losing side, I don't think I can address that.
Right, yeah, you can't. So bef- before you take a vote, think about though the operation of what you would be expecting. You would say that if there was any money that was brought in, there would be a absolute timeframe that it had to be spent. I will guarantee you that money will be spent. However, it's the quality of what we're trying to get it spent on is what gives me a little bit of a pause. If we're hurrying up and we're spending a thousand dollars every year, that, you know, that's, so it's.
This is where it would be, excuse me, a good place for a threshold, say it's ten thou- once this fund reaches ten thousand dollars, five thousand, eleven thousand, from that date forward, you have X amount of months to spend it. Make it go away.
Oh, okay.
But it still makes it hard, 'cause what if they decide, hey, let's, let's, let's put this a project together that's gonna take five years to develop the, the funds for and you put a five-year threshold, but it takes them six years to do it. They're gonna build up all this money and then it's gonna, it's gonna go away. So there's, there's two different, you know, sides to this.
And that's, it, it adds an element of unpredictability in the development of a larger project. So what you, I think my concern is you would pretty much be kinda putting a damper on the scale of the projects that would be considered. We don't anticipate this is gonna be generating hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is gonna be generating a few thousand dollars. And my concern with putting that sunset on it that you describe is you're, you're kind of automatically putting a damper on the scale of the projects that they would consider. You know, if there was a larger thing that they really wanted to pursue, the, whatever that may be, the arch over the forty-fifth parallel or whatever it might be. And then we have this sunset provision, it, it kind of then puts a real damper on, better not count on that fund, 'cause, you know, it's gonna take longer than that for us to, whatever. I'm just speaking my mind.
Yeah, so that, I mean, we could still go to the position of asking staff to come back, say in a year from now and ask us what's going on. Or we could, at any meeting under new business, ask staff to come back at the following month with what's going on.
As part of the agenda.
Sure, absolutely.
Without having to go through amendments and stuff.
Yeah.
We can always amend, you know, redo this later and say, let's, you know, there's so much development.
I think what we've done tonight is quite a bit.
And actually at the council hearing, the council could say, well, the planning commission didn't, they talked about requiring the money be spent within a timeframe, but they didn't make any motion about it. We're aware of that issue and we're so aware of it and concerned that we're gonna add that into the language.
Then you're gonna have to go through all this.
Yeah, then they'd have to go through all the, then they would find out it's not easy to make a motion to add language like that.
For now, I like what we've done. I am still.
Concerned.
Yeah, concerned. But I, I don't know, personally don't know how to do it. It isn't gonna cause more constraints and more issues than we want, so.
I may come back to you in a year and say, you know, we've raised three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
This is not an issue.
This is not an issue, so. Yeah, you gotta spend it by July. I want nothing to do with landscaping design.
Let's go write the sign code.
Okay, okay. Oh my gosh, Gary. Let's.
Who is it?
Oh, God. Let's move on.
Okay.
New old business staff report.
The only thing I wanted to cover in the staff report is at our next city council meeting, we have two important public hearings that you are integral in. Well, one, area B, not so much, but interested. Area B is, is going back to council to, it's a very minor amendment. It's simply to allow flexibility on the size of the building. The current proposal is they wanna aggregate all of the square foot, that twenty-four thousand. Currently, it's divided up into two buildings, they wanna aggregate it into one building. So we are asking the council for flexibility to be able to allow them to do that. Plus, there were some things in the order that were requiring on the timing of the improvements. And now that the city, it was written with the idea that we would sell that property to another party. But now the city is the property owner and it, then there were some conditions that didn't make sense that we are trying to clarify on the timing when it goes in, that sort of thing. The other hearing is Safeway. And that has now, we've, that is now before the city council. And that's of course, the big issue is where your recommendation was to allow gasoline service station, but no convenience store. They have asked for consideration to be able to allow a larger convenience store than even the proposal than what you saw.
And after the, you know, the recent Kaiser Times on cigarettes being sold to kids and stuff, do we create another cigarette store for kids?
Well, fortunately, we're, we're not here to discuss that anymore.
I just made my two cents.
However, so my staff report to council, oftentimes I have additional discussion about maybe there's some additional information the council may wish to, to consider. Even though they've submitted a letter, my recommendation to them is this is the recommendation that there be allowed gasoline service under limited circumstances, under a conditional use process, but not to allow convenience store sales at all, period. So. That's gonna, there's gonna be fun times. Anyway, so that's, that's what I wanted you to be aware of.
Council liaison, oh, Gary. Thank you. While we're on this subject, when I met with Nate and Shane the other day and he, he told me they want a, I forget what it was, a thousand square foot store last time, just to pick a number, now they want bigger than that.
Oh, it was eight hundred last time and.
Okay. So whatever it is, and, and we had, I think, valid reasons to say no. I believe Josh is up Monday to report to council on the meeting, you know, just as, as we always do. But since there's a.
Yeah, he won't be here.
Oh, you're not, you're, seriously, you're out of town? Oh, so it's up for volunteer?
Yeah, it's up for a volunteer.
I think it should be somebody that carried the motion, myself, not someone who spoke in opposition to it. But anyhow, in addition to, you know, the, the regular committee report, I think it would be appropriate to support our earlier statement that we carried, that staff has carried forward, that this planning commission is opposed to any s- s- food beverage sales over there. And I think we should present that in the public hearing, so they again hear it again and we're not just relying and putting that burden on staff, but that we as, as a planning commission stand before the council and make that statement clearly and separate from the committee report, so they hear it very well. And it could be a, a different person, I mean, you could have two people doing, you know.
Well, Josh can't make it, so.
How convenient.
Well, we might guess. I'm available, so, but is anybody else?
City council hearing, the chairman that night.
Well, I'm, I'm available, so I can go in your stead, but.
And then would you also make a separate statement at the public hearing? I think, I mean, I just think that would help support our position again. Even though Kim knows all about it.
Yeah, but, yeah, I, I think.
We'll carry that ball.
But I, I, I think your point's well taken that, that it's, it's an important one and, and we were, you know, on that particular issue, we were all completely in agreement, so, and we had some long deliberations.
Actually, it was, it was, the vote was four to two. There was, and I don't know exactly, I'll have to go back to the record.
Thank you for helping with my poor memory.
I moved on against it because I wanted to have time for the two parties who said they wanted to talk, to be able to talk.
And they haven't.
I agree with your statement that, at least I was against a convenience store part of it.
And that's, I think, the probably the, the big, big issue from this, in agreement with.
I think Michael was opposed to the fuel station period, correct?
So, so I, if, I, I, I could honestly, I just wanna clarify, i- i- if I, Monday night, if I, if I say something, I can say, in our discussions, we are opposed to the. Okay, 'cause I don't wanna say something and somebody say, well, I really didn't, you know, so, okay.
So is it fair to characterize it that even though the vote was not unanimous, the opposition to the convenience store was unanimous?
Unanimous, yes.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
They'll probably have their whole crew that was here before.
Probably.
With the posters.
And the posters and.
Casting thousands, is there a portion better maps?
Yeah, I hope they have the better maps, they didn't really.
So show up with your Ware Mart hat on.
I think I'll, does anybody else wanna attend too?
I was planning on attending, but I.
Okay, well, we'll see.
If it's gonna be a late night, I, on the way back in town, I'm sure that I could go right by and I could stop in here and see what happened.
Probably will be late, but.
Okay, back to council liaison.
I think there's five public hearings. I think there's five public hearings.
Yeah, I was just going to invite everyone to the council meeting Monday, the seventeenth, at seven P M. It will be a busy, long night, so make sure you have coffee and eat, I guess, a healthy dinner that doesn't put you to sleep. Because we do have, as we've said, the public hearing for Area B and Safeway. We also will be talking the police fee and the parks fee, so that's four, so there must be one more. And I haven't seen the agenda, so. And the liquor license for a change of ownership. So we do have five public hearings. Again, anyone that has spoken either for or against any of the parks fees or police are more than welcome to come and speak again. We take everyone that attends any meetings for committee meetings and city councils' public testimony to heart. That's part of our job, is to listen to everyone. So I would encourage any of anyone's listening tonight to please plan on attending or at least tuning in on channel twenty-three or kaiserTV.org. As everyone knows, the eclipse is coming up, and so plan accordingly to that because that is the buzz in this community and every other community about making sure you have water and food. I know the Parks Foundation and the committee is working diligently at Kaiser, for Kaiser River Rapids Park to fill that up and bring some money to, back into our community, also to put the money back into the parks fund. So they need volunteers, and that signup sheet is located on the Parks Foundation's website. I believe Jeremy's put that there, so if you know anyone that wants to volunteer, we would love to have them. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And I think we've already, council representative for July seventeenth, you'll, you'll, we'll, we'll do a reschedule for you, and I'll just, I'll go in your stead and I'll do the Kaiser Planning Commission update to the council and traffic safety update, and then I'll testify at the, the Safeway hearing. And anybody else that wants to attend, that would be great to keep me awake or whatever, bring me coffee, so. Yeah. Anything else from anybody? Well, thank you, and thank everybody tonight. I, I was teasing Nate this mor, when I came in, because the third stage of the Tour de France, Nate Brown won the King of the Mountain jersey, so, and he's from USA, I said, I know that guy. Just. Just a, a, an area celebration. The Peter Courtney Minto Island Bridge will be opening, grand opening will be August second. Things will start about four o'clock with a, kind of a crossing from Wallace Marine over to the park. So that's, even though that's in Salem, it really has a positive effect on Kaiser too because we do have a bike facility from Kaiser that will go that way. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. And with that.